Good evening, I'm gonna be open the meeting of the Shasbury School District for the purpose of reorganization. So I'm confirming that, are there any newly elected members here and have they been sworn in?
They've been sworn in.
I've been sworn in.
Thank you. Okay, nominations are in order for the Chair of the Shasbury School District Board of Directors. Nominations please.
Nominate Ed.
Ed Malloy has been nominated, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, was it you have who nominated in second?
Yep.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations, all in favor of Ed Malloy as Chair of the Shasbury School District, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
No, he said aye.
He said aye.
I said aye.
Okay, I didn't, you got David too. Alright, then, Ed Malloy, I will turn the meeting over to you for the other nominations.
Thank you. Okay, nominations for the Vice Chair of the Shasbury School Board. Let's see, do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Tony.
We have a nomination of Tony. Is there, and we got a second over there. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carried. Okay, Tony, you're now Vice Chair. We'll take a nominations for Clerk of the Shasbury School Board.
And let's note that Clerk will serve also at this, on the Transitional School Board.
Right.
Could that change?
It can change.
Yeah, from the other night?
The Clerk?
Yeah, 'cause if the Clerk changes, does that change the Transitional Board now?
It can, yeah. Yeah, they'd have to be sworn in and, yeah.
Do we have any nominations for Clerk of the Shasbury School Board?
I nominate Scott.
Do I have a second?
A second.
You have a nomination of Scott McInnity? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, C-O-D-T. Okay. And, okay, now for the Board's Committees, which are SVSU, we need two, we need two people nominated for representatives on the SVSU Board, and one, and also two alternates.
One alternate.
One alternate. We got two slots here, so.
I nominate John.
Okay, John is nominated for the SVSU, do I have a second? I'll second it. Um, do we have any other nominations for the SVSU Board?
I nominate Scott.
Who's on?
Who's on right now?
Who was it?
Who?
Who was it?
Me, it was me, it was me and Dave.
Dave.
Yeah. Okay, we have a nomination for Scott, do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations for the SVSU Board of Directors? Hearing none? All those in favor of Tony and Scott?
John.
John, oh, it isn't, okay, geez, how about your name, though?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, we have a nomination of John and Scott for the SVSU Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other? All those opposed? So carried. Uh, nomination for SVSU alternate. We need one, one for that.
Nominate Ed.
We have one nomination, are there any other ones? Alright, I better have a second here first. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Ed is SVSU alternate?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Now, if anybody, on the committee assignments, we have finance, food service, negotiations, administrator and teachers, and ESP, and policy and technology. If anybody wants to volunteer?
I'll stay on policy.
Okay.
I'm already there.
Tony, Tony wants to stay on policy, thank you. Anybody else want to volunteer for anything? I don't hear, I don't, I don't hear Dave volunteering.
He's kinda hard.
Put, put you in where?
Wherever you think, uh, wherever, wherever you need me.
Okay. Anybody else want, I'll, I'll, I'll put in the rest of you for...
Okay, just not, not, not negotiation team, please.
Okay. Well, that makes, that makes John, Tony and Scott very happy, 'cause I, difficult for me to be on the negotiation team. I don't know if they'll be doing much negotiation next year anyways. They're doing it right now.
And depending what happens with the union organization, the, not the union, not the Teachers Union, with the Union Elementary District, all these positions could come to an end on June thirtieth.
Yeah.
And it would be someone from the Unified Board that would be negotiating.
So this, this would be just, all these appointments would just be until?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, so this is only till June thirtieth.
You put me in for whatever.
I'll, I'll put, I will, I will let everybody know where they go.
Thank you.
Divvy it up.
I'll divvy it up.
There is a negotiations meeting next Monday, teachers?
Um, no, teachers' negotiations on hold until they assign an arbitrator or mediator. So we don't have a date yet.
Okay, so this, these are only till June thirtieth. Okay.
Unless, unless there is no consolidation, then...
Yeah, then, then we, then we go, therefore, okay, so I will... You want finance, Dave?
Finance.
Dave, okay, put Dave on finance. I went on food service. Technology? Anybody want technology?
I don't, I don't think you need to point anybody right now, they're not currently meeting, so you'd be good to leave that.
Okay, how about the, how about the negotiations? I can do ESP. I can't do teachers.
Understood.
Just throw me in wherever, yeah, I mean, just, doesn't matter to me.
Okay, we'll put you into negotiations for, uh... Negotiation teachers and administrator. And...
Lucky the new guy usually gets policy, but I took it away from him.
Yeah, that's right, new guy usually gets policy.
That's what they told me, at least, when they gave it to me.
That's what I...
So that's not a good one?
It's, uh, challenging.
Right.
Okay.
It's a good word, right?
Yes, challenging. And I'll put you on technology.
Me?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so we got finance, Dave, for food service, Ed, negotiations administrator, John, negotiation teachers, John, negotiation ESP, Ed, policy, Tony, and technology, Tony.
You've got it.
Okay, so that's that. Okay. Citizens comments? Don't see any, okay. So now we'll go over to the action minus, Treasuries reports. And... Anybody have any questions on the Treasuries reports? This is for December amended, January and February. I get, the amended one was about the KIP fund, I believe. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the Treasuries reports?
You make a motion. You accept?
Tony, Tony made it for the Treasuries reports for the three months?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Any other, do we have any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay. F Y twenty tuition approval.
So, based on the budget that we, um, put before the voters, which may or may not be our F Y twenty budget, we use that, we were required, um, by state statute to announce what our tuition would be for F Y twenty by January fifteenth. So, we announced based on the budget figures we had at that time, uh, which was twelve thousand and three hundred, and basically we just need to determine what we're actually going to charge if the Shasbury School District actually will be, um, in operation next year. Uh, we budgeted five incoming at twelve thousand dollars fifty, so we can't charge any more than what we announced.
Yep.
We can certainly charge less, so it's, um, it's up to the board, and again, we did budget twelve thousand.
I think we should keep it.
Keep, keep the rate there, okay? Wanna keep the rate there, Dave?
Yeah, thanks, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all those in favor of keeping the rate?
Aye.
At twelve thousand?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, carried. Authorization for executing contracts.
Do I have the language, do you want it?
Okay, whoever wants to do it.
So, this is a motion that has to be read into the minutes, it's, uh, something that our auditors pointed out, it's to authorize me or my designation, or my designee to sign contracts, so, um, it has to be recorded in the, in the minutes.
Okay. This is a motion to authorize the superintendent or his or her designee, his designee, to execute on behalf of Shasbury School District purchase orders, agreements for consulting services, uh, grant agreements and other contracts arising, affecting the routine operation of the school district. The superintendent or designee shall not execute any contracts resulting from a public bid process, any employment agreements, or any long-term contracts without express authority from the Board. Somebody wanna make a motion on that?
You make a motion.
Make a motion to accept that?
Yep.
We have a second, John?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a second? Any other comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want this? You got one? Alright. Give that back that way. Okay, Budget Status Report, everybody got one of those? And Transfer Requests, do we have any transfer requests?
So we really have three transactions kind of rolled here until one, um, transfer request. We had some overages in custodial supplies, and we have some excess in the health insurance lines, we just wanted authorization and funding to cover those supplies in the custodial lines. Um, we're also asking to, um, for the Board to authorize us to move thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars from the capital reserve account, um, to cover some of the extra work and extra expenses that we've had, that we did over the summer. And then, the last one is actually taking money, which is now in the general fund, two thousand ninety-four dollars and nineteen cents, and putting that back in the KIP fund. We actually moved more than, um, we moved with the Board authorized, but we didn't actually end up spending it, so we can put that money back.
Okay, so we have to, shall we do that, that, Renee suggested to move, move the money back?
Yeah. Absolutely.
And accept the...
Whatever she said.
What, yeah, whatever she said.
Yes.
Cause Richard's, Richard's got it all done, he's got it all done.
Whatever she said.
Whatever she said.
That's what you wrote, right?
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor of transferring those as requested? Didn't have a motion? How about a motion?
I'll make a motion to do whatever Renee said, to accept this memorandum to transfer funds.
Transfer the funds.
Yep.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll transfer that, Consent Agenda. Okay, that's the, um... Consent Agenda is the, um, minutes from the January tenth, January twenty-fourth, and annual floor meetings. Anybody have any questions on any of those minutes? If not?
Yep, I make a motion to accept.
Accept the, okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments?
This is just the minutes.
This, well, I don't know what else we got in the consent agenda, oh, the warrants, yes.
There's only one, right? Oh, no.
Just say, and, just say, if you wanna accept them, just go ahead and say, and the warrants.
And the warrants. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as a whole.
Okay, good going. We have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of that. Policies, fifty-one eighty-five, warn, anaphylaxis.
There was a, as you could see, there's a bunch of wording that's been taken out. Mrs. Loomis and some of the other nurses from across the, the district got together and really went through this, presented it to us at the policy meeting, and, uh, there was a lot of wording in there that really just didn't pertain anymore, didn't need to be in there, it was in the administrative regs in some parts, and it was kind of, you know, put in there a few different times, so, we all went through it, we agreed, we kept in a couple other ones, uh, line thirty-three, we ended up keeping in, we thought that it was, uh, even though we know what'll happen, we thought it was good that they saw that the parents will be notified, so we left that line in.
Yep.
They, they put a lot of work into it, so, I'm just putting it out there.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the changes on policy five-one-eight-five? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
The warning.
That's warning that, yes, that is a warrant. Okay. Next is John. Our ventilation project.
Well, we have a project out for bid. We sent it out essentially Monday, and there's a walkthrough scheduled for Friday at one o'clock. Uh, I've heard, I, I, it went in the paper, of course, as I understand it, and I...
I don't know if it's actually run yet, but it will.
I think it has, because I got a call from, um, one of those outfits that likes to publish the, uh, the warning. Um, so, uh, I also called, uh, five contractors, uh, pretty much the same ones that we had bid the first time. They are, uh, Hayden, um, Bennington Cooling and Heating, Alliance, Vermont Mechanical, and GSK is who I sent it to, relatively local contractors. So I've heard from a few of them and sent plans and specifications to them, so we're good to go, and hopefully, um, we'll have a good, um, showing on Friday.
They indicate they're gonna come Friday?
Um, I, I know the ones that are interested in bidding it that are local, they will definitely be here, and I'm sure Alliance will be here too, they, they got right back to me and said that they wanted to bid it absolutely, so, um, I, I think things came together pretty good, uh, on the plans, um, uh, just to give you an overview, um, we have the library, there, there are basically three parts to it, we have the library section where we're demolitioning the, uh, the multi-zone unit that's in that closet, and we're gonna put in fan coil units with a heat recovery unit on the roof, similar to what we did in the other wing. The fan coil units, um, will zone the area, I think we've got five of them there, one that does the administrative wing, one that does I T, the library, classroom down there, and I think this one here, so there's like five of them that are going in, I have the plans here, I could look. Two of the air handlers have an alternate for cooling, the administrative office is an I T, so we put it in as an alternate, and, uh, we'll get a separate price for it, and if it's within the budget, you can accept it or not. The second part was to replace the multi-zone unit that's serving the stage and multipurpose room. So that'll be removed, um, we're gonna utilize the same ductwork, in fact, even with this fan coil system, we're utilizing much of the same ductwork that's here, we're just splitting it up so you have separate zones. So, uh, that is somewhat straightforward, we're gonna put in a new air handler, all of the equipment, these fan coils and the new air handler, will be using the new thermostats that, they will be the same as what we've just put in the wing, so everything will be pretty much the same. And the third part is to replace the kitchen hood, uh, or hoods, there's two of them in there, uh, one over the range and then one over the, um, the oven and steamer, I guess it's a steam kettle you have there. One thing that was, uh, uh, really good that worked out, I, originally I thought we were gonna end up putting in a make-up air system with it because of the size of the hood and whatnot, but because of the equipment that you have up there, we were able to reduce the volume of the hood in half, and when we put in variable speed on that, the hoods will actually run extremely low, and we're not gonna put in a separate make-up air system, so that's gonna keep the cost down probably pretty good for that system. So I'm kind of pleased about that. Uh, and it wasn't till I looked under the hood and saw what we had for equipment that we were able to do that, just heat-producing equipment versus some of the high-grease equipment, which demands more volume when you, when you have one under hood, so you're in, you're in pretty good shape as far as that's concerned. And that's sort of it in a nutshell.
When's, when's the bid gonna be due?
Uh, they'll be due a week from Friday. So I'm giving them two weeks.
They're gonna include everything, right?
Pardon?
They're gonna include the whole?
It's all packaged together.
Okay.
With one alternate, as I mentioned.
Right.
And, uh, so you'll be getting a bid for the whole amount.
Good, thank you, Jen.
Any questions you have, uh, you know, feel free. Jeff, did I send you drawings, I think I did, didn't I? Did I send you a package? Oh, my gosh, I'll, I'll send you one.
I understand, I'm trying.
Huh? It's electronic anyways, at least you'd have them, you know? And I'll send you a copy too.
Was there anything that we needed to run by them? I can't remember when we spoke the other day.
Well, we're, we're gonna run it the same way we ran the last project, so, you know, I've got in the documents that will, the, the awarded contractor will get an A I A contract, so, that's the way we did the last one, so we'll do it the same way. I don't think there's anything specific, um, I'm trying to think too, I don't, I don't think there was anything we needed the Board to really approve or know about.
When bids come in?
Yeah, just when the bids come in.
That's what the question is.
I, I can say, you know, it's, it's a busy time right now, it's, it's, uh, you know, I, I, I'm glad we have contractors that wanna bid the job, um, I have a lot of projects going out right now, uh, going in different directions, and sometimes the bidder's list dwindles rather quickly because people are busy this year, but, um, I know that, uh, Bennington Heating and Cooling and Hayden and Alliance, at least those three are, are very interested in doing the project, so...
John, will the summer month be enough time to get it completed?
Yeah, yeah, this, there shouldn't be a big deal with this.
They should be done, should do it this summer.
Yeah, it should be able to be done over the summer pretty easily, I don't think there's anything major, of any major complication, and second, utilizing the existing ductwork here, it's kept it rather simple, um, they will have to get above the ceiling and, you know, take the tiles out and, and, and get to the areas where they need to hang these things, but I think it's pretty straightforward.
You know, I'll be, I'll ask the, the one question, so all the asbestos stuff has been taken care of, so we don't have that to worry about as we get into the new phase?
As far as I know, we're, we're not in an area where we would encounter that.
Okay.
I suppose there's a couple of possibilities, uh, I thought it had already been taken care of in the exposed areas like the boiler room, and even this air handling room, so they do have to disconnect and demolition some of the piping that's in there, as well as in the boiler room, I don't believe there's any asbestos there, I think it was just a surprise to find it up in that corridor.
I think Jay had the inspection done on this fall.
Okay.
And we can't, he brought him down here specifically to look in this area, and there was nothing else.
Okay. Well, I just...
Yeah, don't, we don't, we don't want any more surprises.
Yeah, we don't need a delay like...
This is a newer part of the building, so it really shouldn't be anything in this area.
That's right, this, this wing, well...
When was this wing done?
Seventy-three.
Up until seventy-nine, we were still using asbestos, yeah.
Well, but if Jay had a look.
Yeah, yeah, they poked around in here.
It should be.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't see anything that looked like it, not that I'm, I'm the person that can tell you exactly what it is, but, uh, sometimes it's difficult to know, but, uh, I think we're in a good shape.
Good. Thank you, Jen. Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanna share, share with the Board, we had our, I think it's the first one we ever had, but Fran Endress, who's a former teacher here, I don't know if some of you may remember Fran, she's been working with some now fourth grade students on Spelling Bee for the last couple of years, and we had our first official Spelling Bee last week for those fourth graders, we had three finalists, like Jack LaPointe, Ben Woods, and Sophie Koffer, and I'm pleased to announce Jack LaPointe won, and he will be going to Burlington for our state tournament, uh, I think it's later this month.
Okay.
Um, so it was pretty exciting, we held in the art room, I was one of the official judges, um, it was pretty exciting, the parents came to watch, it was a good time, so, and Jack's pretty excited as well to win and to, to head to Burlington to, to see how he does against the state.
Now, what grades do this?
Four, this was fourth grade.
Fourth grade only?
Yep, this was fourth, she's been working with her for a couple of years, I think it's third grade is when she started, and then all of this year, and decided to hold the official Spelling Bee this year with them, and, uh, she had, those three kiddos especially, there was one other one, but they, um, they weren't able to make it, but those three kiddos especially have been working pretty hard the last couple of years, uh, to try to qualify for the state tournament, so, looking forward to see how he does in that.
Okay.
That's all I have for tonight.
Did I see that on the sign walking in, you have some event Friday night?
Oh, yes, actually, I have two events this week, I don't know why, I never mentioned those. I'm sorry about that, we have two events, we have, uh, our literacy, our annual literacy nights on Thursday night, fantasy theme, so kiddos are welcome to dress up as their favorite superhero, princess, fantasy character from a book, we have Jan Barret coming to read a story, um, to a couple of kiddo, or not, to a couple groups of kiddos, we also have our annual spaghetti dinner, um, sixth grade spaghetti dinner coming Friday night, which is a tradition here in Shasbury, always well-attended, and, um, sixth grade's looking forward to serving some spaghetti to our community, and, and, uh, it's always a good night, it's a lot of fun, we have our cash lot, or we have our lottery ticket tree that we're gonna raffle, we are a fifty-fifty raffle, plus the silent auction, which is, if anybody's come before, it's a number of community, uh, organizations donate things, and people are, do a silent auction to see who they, who wins the highest bid, so like I said, it's always a fun night, it's always well-attended.
It's Thursday?
Literacy, literacy night is Thursday, the spaghetti dinner is Friday.
What time on Friday?
Five to seven.
Five to seven. Five to seven.
And Thursday's from six to seven.
Okay. I don't really have anything, I just wanted to, uh, thank everything, everybody who, uh, attended the, uh, our district, our, our school meeting that we had on town meeting day, I think that went very quietly. Wasn't much there. And, uh, thank the board members for showing up, and, and Jeff. And, uh, oh, and Renee was there. That's all I got, I don't have anything else. SVSU?
Can I ask, uh, add one thing, just one? What are you doing five o'clock at, this Thursday? Cause you've been now appointed to be the support staff, uh, negotiating, we're in negotiations Thursday at the CDC Assembly Room at five o'clock.
Okay, five o-
And, uh, we failed to have a quorum last time that, uh, we sat down to negotiate with them, so I, I, I know we'd really appreciate it if you could make it, so we could have a quorum.
Five P M?
The CDC Assembly Room.
At CDC this Thursday?
Yes.
I tried to make it last time, but I, I had my, I had my time track wrong.
Well, thank you.
Yep. Okay, it's five o'clock this Thursday at CDC, okay.
Richard was bored there.
Yep. Okay, I'll put that on my calendar. Okay, anybody else have anything else? No? Okay, for your, our next meeting, or you have a couple of things on your information, our next meeting is April eleventh, I wonder, is that a Thursday?
Um, should, should be, I think it is.
It is.
We're back to Thursday.
April eleventh is a Thursday.
I appreciate your, uh, your flexibility this week, guys, with the literacy night on Thursday.
I appreciate your flexibility on the Thursday.
Was this, I may not be able to make it on the eleventh that Thursday, but you'll, Renee or some, will send somebody here if you're, if you're fine with somebody other than me attending, uh, the eleventh works.
Okay.
I may be here, but, uh, I'm in Fellows Falls that day, and whether I make it back in time, we'll see.
Alright.
We may want to have a special meeting too at some point when the bids-
Oh, to award the bids, yes.
When the bids come in, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see when they, they're coming in in two, in two weeks, so if we have- Yeah, cause we, we, we want to get the-
Quick as possible.
We want to get those going pretty quick.
Yep, we want to get the bids, accept the bids, so they can start plugging in.
Yep.
You alright with that, Dave?
Tom, good to meet.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, is we'll, uh, if we, if we get the bids in, we'll pick a date to just have a quick, quick meeting for, just on the bids.
Award the bids.
And award the bid.
As long as they come in under budget.
Right.
Yes.
Or you can reject them all.
Yep, you can do that. Renee.
But we won't, because we're positive.
We're posi-, right, according, according to Johnny, cause we're-
We just save money.
Save money.
We just, we just save money somewhere for, on the, on the vent, on the hood, so we're gonna come in below.
Right.
There we go.
What he said.
Yep.
Cause you don't have greasy ducks.
Right.
Alright. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, they should go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
John makes a motion to adjourn, Tony, Tony seconds it? Any other discussion, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
See you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.